Calling this meeting in order, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notori. Councilmember Notori. Rovell.
Here.
Strumlo Burke.
Councilmember Notori and Councilwoman Burke have to unmute. Councilman Notori.
Here.
Councilwoman Burke. You can unmute her. Okay, let the record reflect that we see her here. You can continue, Cal.
And Mayor Milheim.
Here. Sunshine Notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 24th, 2020 additions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of the COVID-19 pandemic, the public meetings have been changed to Zoom. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are in file in the municipal clerk's office.
Okay, next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I ask everybody, please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
Always difficult doing that alone. You don't hear everybody else.
It is difficult.
Okay, so, um, next item on our agenda is executive session. I'd like to always state the reason why we're going to executive session. There are topics in executive session. A Claire Moss potential litigation is number A, and number B is redevelopment negotiations. Before I ask for a motion to enter executive session, as I do with all Zoom meetings, I try and take it a little slower than normal. Traditionally, if we were seated in the council chambers, the council would remain seated, and we would ask everybody to leave the room. I do see mostly familiar faces here, but if you are new, just know that you're going to stay put. You're not going to go anywhere. In a few seconds, council members and members of the administration and professionals will get a link on their Zoom to click to leave here and go into a private breakout room. We're going to discuss those two topics. No action will be taken while we're in executive session. No votes at all will be taken while we're in executive session. So without further ado, I believe you're going to have a link. I'm going to ask anybody that receives the link to click that link. I like to always give an estimate of how long we're going to be in executive session. I am always wrong. Last time I said 15, 20 minutes, it was almost an hour. I don't expect it to be an hour. I'm going to try and get us through it as soon as possible. 20 minutes, 30 minutes. Again, I'm setting myself up for disaster, I know, but that's what how long I expect that we might be in executive session. Again, no action will be taken. You should have, Councilwoman Depena has joined us, let the record reflect, and she should get also a link to go into a breakout room. Okay, everybody, so stay put. You guys do nothing, we're going to leave, and we're going to come back.
You need a motion to go into private?
Motion to go into private.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, everybody. So we have a motion made to go into private, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, we're going to go. Just left executive session, we made a motion to enter executive session, we discussed the two topics we mentioned, as well as a little bit of personnel there at the end. No action was taken while we're in executive session. We had a motion to leave executive session that was done while we're in executive. We're now back here, rejoining the public meeting. For those of you who are following along, this is our combined conference/regular meeting. And the next topic on our agenda is something that we call discussions. So I just wanted to put this on the agenda. Obviously, this was a hot topic for the last week or so about our snow rule practices. So I don't want to necessarily put the manager on the spot, but I do know that there were a lot of, I want to say complaints. I'm not necessarily saying they were all valid. Some were understandable, but you know, as I've told people that, listen, 24 inches of snow fell in less than 48 hours, and the township is as equipped as we possibly can be to deal with that. I'm going to be speaking about this a little bit during my, or my mayor's report, so that's some of the stuff that I want to say, but I just want to ask, you know, just want the manager to touch base. He did give us a good email today, members of the council, about our GPS tracking and about, you know, I am the chief complaint officer, okay? I get every single complaint possible. There hasn't been a plow on my street in four days. And for about two days, I would ask people for their address, and I would contact Anthony or contact DPW and find out that a plow had been down that street eight times already. So I get it, it was a frustrating issue. I'm going to speak about it during my mayor's report, but Mr. Iacono, if you could just, and if you could just briefly touch on maybe some of the stuff that you sent to council, our GPS capabilities, our ability to quickly bring in a private contractor like I know you did, if you could just touch on that stuff a little. I'm going to speak on this more in the mayor's report, though.
Yes, ma'am. Part of my, my report was going to be that, that handout that I gave you, and I could go, if you don't mind, I could put it up so I could just go down and give it a summary? Is that all right if I do it that way?
Yeah.
All right, so hold on, just give me one second. All right, okay, ready? And I'm just going to just give a summary, and by no means should this be mistaken as any excuses for any shortcomings. This was an extremely, extremely difficult storm. Depending on who you ask, it was the worst in the last 112 years, and certainly it did beat us up a little bit. I do want everyone to know that on Friday, January 29th, and that was like two days before the storm actually even one flake hit the ground, we, we met with our DPW, we reviewed our snow procedures with police and OEM. We sent out our first public notice, which also includes robo calls, and that was the first of 10 robo calls in a four-day period. And again, I don't think anybody really thought we were going to get 24 to 27 inches back on Friday, January 29th, but we did have a meeting, and we did go over our procedures, and we felt that we had everything in place, ready to go. Somewhere around 7:00 PM on Sunday, January 31st, we started getting some snowflakes. What we normally do is we do a salt operation, we salt the hills, things of that nature, and things, and so at that point, we had nine men and one mechanic working. Somewhere around 11 o'clock, we had four inches. We moved over from salt operation to plow operation. Again, that was, you know, at 11:00 PM, four inches. Somewhere around 3:30 in the morning, we called in our complete, our complete operation, and that's buildings and grounds, because again, this is Monday morning at 3:30 in the morning, we're thinking that we're going to open up town hall, we're going to open up public buildings. So our crew's out there 3:30 thinking that possibly by Monday, everything, you know, we could be open, but again, the snow just kept on coming, and the next thing you know, we were at 14 inches during the day on Monday. We, we logged in 630 calls, and again, I'm at it all 630, it's probably fair to say all 630 were not, not compliments, but concerns, issues, and complaints. So we went from one phone operator, we went on to a second. Again, the full, full operation is intact here. We got, as of sometime early Tuesday morning, that's when we start measuring 16 to 27 inches in certain sections of town. At that point, we have all our employees working. We have 14, we own 14 pieces of equipment, 38 members all working. At that point, we're on three operators. We have three people answering the phone at Public Works now, because the calls are coming in, and they're coming in at, oh, like 60 calls an hour. At that point, we also call, oh, I'm sorry, the Board of Education, Board of Education, Board of Education lent us some of their equipment. We started calling on Monday for rentals, and most people are using their equipment in the height of the storm. So come Wednesday morning, we have outside contractors come in, and we hired two local outside contractors to bring in some outside equipment to assist. Again, we own 14 pieces of equipment. Without any of them breaking out, without any of them breaking down, 27 inches is still a lot of, a lot of snow to move, and in some cases, it's just too much snow. And again, we're not making an excuse. If somebody's street didn't get addressed or didn't get plowed in two days, that's, that's not acceptable. But again, it wasn't because of our efforts. Again, we had a full complement, and then on Wednesday, we started bringing outside help in to help with some of the, the operation. Somewhere around 7 o'clock, and I just want to point this out, because again, as much as it's not acceptable for streets not to get plowed, if they didn't get plowed, it wasn't because of any one person or one group's efforts, okay? It wasn't until Wednesday, February 3rd at 7:00 PM, almost three full days later, that some of our employees went home for the first time. So and again, I just want to drive that point at home. On Sunday night at 7 o'clock, they left their warm house, they left their family. They did not leave our streets and our Public Works garage, and they did not walk back into their home until Wednesday at 7:00 PM. That's when, obviously, we started getting a better handle on it. Thursday morning, we wake up, we still have outside contractors working along with our equipment, and again, we're opening up streets and, and working on this. While, you know, while these calls are coming in, there's 288 streets in Belleville, but the fire department, they're jumping in, we have 550 fire hydrants that had to be dug out. So again, you know, even if, even if it took a half hour to do one fire hydrant, you know, do the math, 555 hydrants, we have to get to all of them, obviously. Emergency, emergency vehicles are always top, top priority, crosswalks. Some of those, a lot of the calls are residents that have handicap spots, and you can't expect somebody that's confined to a wheelchair or to a cane to dig out their car. So we try, we try to do as best as we can with the manpower we have, but as a footnote, we have over 700 registered handicap spots in Belleville. That's just, again, as much as we never want to say no, it's just impossible to say yes to everybody.
Anthony, Anthony, let me just, I'm going to hit on, I'm glad you're hitting on some of this stuff, I'm going to hit on some of it in my mayor's report.
Sure.
Go down to, I just want residents to know that, you know, this council here has really, and I know Deputy Mayor Graziano is going to speak on IT next, this council has really invested a lot in, in IT and our infrastructure. Many of them may not realize that our nearly probably 90% of our, of our equipment, of our vehicles, is GPS. So I'm the guy that gets the phone call that says the plow hasn't been down my street in six days, and then I call up you, or I call up Bobby, and we find out the plow had been there 27 times, because we made that investment in technology. The next thing that residents should know is that we're making an investment into being able to record our telephone lines, so that we'll know that if, if an employee gives out inaccurate information, well, we can, we can find that out and correct that employee. But here's just some of the PIN placements, and I think you had a list that you showed us, yeah, that one I did.
This is, we just ran a report on, on Garden Avenue, it was just a call, you know, that came in, and it actually shows you when we started and when we, when we finished, and it actually shows that Garden Avenue, there were, was, there was equipment on Garden Avenue 27 times, 27 times in a, let's just round it off and say, a 48 to 36-hour period. Now, this is good, the technology is great, and again, in all fairness, our report that we started running on certain streets showed us that we didn't hit certain streets enough, okay? So we've identified some, some shortcomings that obviously we hope to, to improve upon. So we, we're doing some tracking, and the good news is when we run a report like this, and when we do a spot check like this, this is just one vehicle, that all those green dots is one vehicle in a 24-hour period of streets that he was at, and that's just one vehicle. Again, I told you, we have a total of 14 pieces of equipment. So the good news is, you know, our report shows us in some cases what we did, and, and again, in some cases, people say it still wasn't enough, but at least we know for a fact that we were on that street X amount of times. But the report also shows some shortcomings as far as some streets that we didn't hit as many as we should have. And then the last thing, I, I do want to just point out that we're already talking with outside contractors for emergencies. Hopefully, we don't have to do this, but we have this in place. I think going forward, this is an emergency. Going forward, we'll work on going out to bid so that we have an emergency contract in place, because when we started calling on Monday and Tuesday in the height of the storm, it was very difficult to get outside contractors, because as you can, you know, imagine, they were doing their own, they were doing their own work. And so that's how come it took us until Wednesday to start bringing in the outside contractors. I think, again, hopefully, we don't see 30 inches, 27 inches, or 25 inches for another 112 years. Clearly, this past Sunday, we had five inches. On December 17th, we had nine inches. Same, same amount of men, same amount of equipment, no complaints. You throw 20 inches on top of the nine inches, or you throw 18 inches on top of the nine inches, it's, it's a whole different ballgame. But I, that's just basically my summary. Certainly, we will be available for questions later on in the report.
So thank you for that, that's exactly what I want. I failed to mention to members of the public that are watching us that this is our first meeting a month, so this means it's our combined conference. So any, any member of the council can put any item on for discussion. Unfortunately, that discussion is amongst us and our professionals. You, as an audience, can listen. You don't have an opportunity to comment just yet, but that will come later on in public commenting portion of the meeting. So this, you know, you might have a question for the administrator at this point, or a question for me at this point, going to ask you to hold those questions for public commenting. At this point, it's, it's our conference portion of the meeting where members of the council with our professionals deliberate and discuss different things. So with that being said, I do have a little more to say about this during my mayor's report, so I'm going to end that unless any council member has any specific question for Manager Iacono. If not, I'm going to hit it during my council, my mayor's report anyway. Without hearing any, next up is the Deputy Mayor Graziano with an IT update. Before he begins, I'm just going to reiterate, this council has made considerable investments in technology. I know he has had a huge, huge hand in that, and what we're seeing is the result of that. When the manager has at his disposal GPS of all of our equipments, one, it's the ability to track it, but two, it's the ability to post event, to actually make informed decisions on maybe some changes or what we could do in the future. So I know there's a lot more to our IT than that, but the Deputy Mayor did put IT update on our agenda today, so I'm going to, I'm going to hand it off to the Deputy Mayor.
So thank you, Mayor. So yes, team, I'd like to just share with you a rat at this point in time. I think the last update that I provided was based on all of our desktops and security measures that we've put in place for all the town employees. So that has been completed. We're also, we're now going into the second phase for this, and we're starting to implement what they call a MPLS network, which we're bringing everybody together. So just to give you a little background, high level, for the past god knows how long, every Belleville site, when I say Belleville site, town hall, police, fire departments, DPW, you get the gist. Everybody had their own connectivity to the internet. Everybody was independent. We never brought it together, and it was multiple costs across. We pay for multiple residential connectivity. What I mean by that is we all have internet connectivity at our house, that's residential. We've never had business-grade connectivity, okay? So that means we're not getting the throughput, we're not getting the resiliency, we're not getting anything. Plus, we're paying. So that being said, we are now have in place, we worked with multiple vendors to bring in MPLS network type to where it's like a spoken hub, right? So the core is town hall. Town hall is separated now, which never was, separated from the police department, right? Police department have their own fast connection, town hall has their own. All our buildings, municipal buildings, come into now town hall, which have an egress and ingress of connectivity, which is now monitored by content filtering, okay? We will, that, what that does is sets the core in place to where again, when you were at these different buildings, you had to dial seven digits to get to the next building. This puts us in a position to bring all of the voice, all of the data, together over one network. And then in the long run, you'll see, we will see it, three, four years down the road in ROI, because now we're not, it's not individual cost, you're getting more bang for your buck. I give you that at a 10,000 for view, and please feel free to ask me any questions whenever, but I know in lieu of time, we're there. Now we're going to be performing the cutovers, right? Instead of had the cutovers to where we can now share a network, where now we can share a server, we don't need five at every location. We can now use one, save maintenance, save costs, and as we move forward, share all the same services. And the good thing is, to let you know, we've also positioned ourselves with the connectivity that we use to the same pretty much, when we talk about the Board of Education, where we're, with the vendors, we're in line with them. It takes one connection to bring it all together. So we're in a better place, we're newer, faster, we're right on that tipping point, and that's our next piece, is to cut over, bring the data and the voice together. So that's it at a high level, Mayor, and also the content filtering, which is now we're seeing who, what we're in, when, in and out. So.
So.
That's what I wanted to share with everybody as a.
We've become, we've become on par with a, with a multimillion-dollar corporation, which is basically what we are. You know, a couple of years ago, everybody had a key to their office, now everybody has a swipe card. Why? Because the wiring inside the walls has been totally upgraded. Now we have real legitimate, I mean, when I first got here, we were running a $29 router behind the mayor's desk to try and livestream meetings, which never worked. Now we have real, you know, enterprise-level software, enterprise-level hardware at every level. We brought in a fiber optic line to town hall, we've split off town hall from the police department. We've done a lot of things, including things like I've mentioned before, the GPS upgrade for our vehicles and stuff like that. We've, we've really come a long way, and unfortunately, as somebody who's in technology on a communication side, you don't often see, you know, community, you don't often see the technology upgrades, you have to actually hear of them from, you know, like a Deputy Mayor or myself repeating it. But I think we've come a long way, I think we have a little more to go. I think we're getting there. Like I said, next step is recording phone lines, like every other company seems to do, providing guest access Wi-Fi. If you happen to be in court, or you happen to be here at a, at a planning board, or, or a council meeting, or a zoning board meeting, you can get on Wi-Fi. Real things that I'm really going to think make a difference to efficiency. Everybody used to have a individual printer next to their desk. Now we have network printers. This is going to shock most of you who are in the corporate world, but it's actually something that we've actually just upgraded to, and we've done a great job, and I think you've done a great job too, Tommy, with that.
And Mayor, just to, just to jump on out for one last thing real fast, is you're right, you're right on par. So when you start sharing the, the voice, you're going to be getting those recordings, you're going to be getting that. The police department now, when we start the key access, when we start the cameras, it's all riding on one network, and it's all in that beautiful communications that, Chief Medikini did, right? It's the same thing there. Fire Chief Oliver will be able to jump on this, so it's all going to be shared, which never been done before here in Belleville. So kudos to everybody, thank you. And I'd be remiss to say, I want to publicly, I mean, with us, Willie's been a, my right-hand man doing this too, helping me out with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really for that. So any other council member have any questions, issues, anything to add, ask to that?
Right, just, just real quick, I mean, and Tommy, you touched on it at the end, that new communication center is awesome, so that's a great thing, and kudos to everybody, you know, involved in that one.
And when we discuss, like I said, we discuss IT and communications, I didn't even hit that point, but I'm going to mention my mayor's report, brand-new communications, you might know Councilwoman Depena got herself a front, a front-seat view of that a couple of days ago. I mean, capabilities are amazing. It looks like the NSA down there, something that hadn't been done in 20, I was actually here on the council 20 years ago, when we last spent about a million dollars to upgrade that. This time came in at $250,000, I think. Again, this council passed the bond, this council oversaw that project, this council brought in the IT upgrades to better equip our, our police, everything from cameras to, it's, it's really wild when you see the technology that they have down there. And I know that every member of the council is very supportive of our police and fire, always want to equip them with the best and latest technology, and I think we've done that, we have. And again, often the residents don't see that, because they just don't get a chance to use it or see it or play with it, they don't know it's there. So every once in a while, we do have to let them know as far as the upgrades that we've taken. Okay, anybody else have anything to add to that? If not, I'm going to move over to the report of the manager. Anybody?
Real quick, Mayor, I just want to thank the Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Rovell for taking the lead on all this IT stuff. I know it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of repetitive stuff and going over stuff again and again, and trying to debunk it, so I want to thank you guys for, for doing that, so thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, you are back up, report of the manager.
So first, let me start off by saying that this was the meeting that I was hoping to distribute the 2020 annual report. It's just about done, it's just I haven't had a chance to finalize it in the last week. I've been able to compose all of the data and numbers for all of the departments in 2020. Obviously, when I do the, I will do the report at the next meeting, but we'll see, you know, the impact that COVID has hit in, in a lot of areas throughout the different departments. And I know last year's annual report was, was interesting at the, at the least. I do want to say that the town of Belleville has a new Chief Financial Officer, Kimberly Kites, and Kimberly's on the call, Kim is on the call with us tonight. I also want to say that our former CFO, Judith Curran, who's also on the call tonight, will be a part of our finance team during the transition. Obviously, we have, we started the budget, and we're in the, we're in budget season. Budget Committee had a meeting last week with another one scheduled for this Tuesday coming up, a week from today. The departments have submitted their budget, now Budget Committee is going to roll up our sleeves. We're definitely faced with a difficult year ahead of us, similar to the previous year. COVID has, has a lot of long-lasting effects on all, all aspects of municipal government. So the committee itself will be working, the Budget Committee will be working very hard. We, we have some deadlines to meet, and one, one of the deadlines is to have our financial statement done by March 5th. So, you know, I'm sure that the, the committee, the Budget Committee is up to the task. And again, most of my.
Time out. The Budget Committee does not submit that financial statement, right?
No, 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 that's, that's, we have some.
Of getting that done for March 5th. Yes. That's not us, right?
No, no, that, that's the, that's the, that's done between the Chief Financial Officer and the auditor. And again, my report basically was going to be centered around the, the snow summary that I just presented, so I look forward to the next meeting to present the annual report.
Thank you. So we, we are optimistic that we're going to get that financial statement on March, we're going to submit that from March 5th. If you were a betting man, Mr. Iacono?
Yes, if I was a betting man, I, I, I definitely bet on it, we're going to meet our deadline.
Through the chair, I got a quick question.
Sure.
For the manager. The, the, did the state extend when they're going to get to back to us as to what type of funding they're going to make available? I mean, do we have any idea, you know, with COVID and all this other stuff going on?
So Joe Ficcone is involved in probably, I'm going to say, a dozen municipalities, and obviously, we're all striving for, you know, to see if we're going to receive some additional aid for COVID. Everybody's hurting on the revenue side, everybody's revenues are off. So Joe is our point person as to what kind of relief, if any, that the, the state's going to give us. Again, I know we spoke about it briefly at, at one of the meetings, that the state will probably allow us to do a three-year average, and again, that's just a tool to use, and how we use it, that's, you know, to be determined, but Joe, Joe Ficcone definitely is our point person on that.
Are they saying still March to, to let us know those numbers? Are they pushing it to April? What are they doing?
Well, see, the, the financial state, they pushed back, the financial statement is normally due in, believe it or not, January, and that was pushed back to, to March based on COVID. So yeah, so to answer your question, I, I would like to think March is going to be a very busy month for us.
I, I would, I would like to know if, if the financial statements always due in January, what COVID has to do with giving us two more months to do it? I mean, we were, we were working, we were here. Do you have any insight as to why the state gave us two more months to produce a piece of paper that, in my opinion, we could have easily produced, but without, you know, without the extent?
It's a little, it's a little, it's not an easy piece of paper to, to bid, and a lot of municipalities are not working at full force, and I, I believe that's, that has a lot to do with it. And again, that's another feather in our cap that we've, since, since last March, we've never shut the doors totally. We worked for skeleton crews, and in some towns, some towns are still working off of split schedules.
No, a lot of towns closed, we really did not close, that's, that's fair.
I just wanted to comment real quick on, on the, the plan for the, you know, how we'll be able to scale in the future, which is something I, I think we really didn't have set aside, and, you know, we, we got a lessons learned out of this snowstorm, and that's the ability for us to actually scale, which kind of, we got caught a little bit flat-footed, but I, you know, I like your plan, Anthony, and I appreciate what you guys did there, and that we can hopefully have the capability in the future. If we need additional resources, we can get them quickly, because that's really the question for us.
Yeah, I, I'm going to, that's a good point, Council. I'm going to discuss that in a second, my mayor's report about recommendations, and a lot of towns just, they go out to bid every year for, hey, in case you get more than eight inches or 10 inches, you have this contract. you have this contract that you can call upon. Uh, and that's, you know, again, this, this happens every couple of decades. I mean, this is a 24, 27 inch storm, but I'm going to talk about that in a second. Anybody else? Any member of the council have anything else for the manager based on his report? Seeing none, uh, we're going to move forward to the report of the mayor. I got a bunch of things, so I'm going to just rattle them off as quickly and as possible as I can. Uh, today was Tuesday, which means it was the probably 13th month of my Estes County mayor's report, uh, mayor's phone call. Every single Tuesday we do this. Uh, some good nuggets come out of that. Uh, Anthony and, uh, Bobby might be interested to know that uh, we were told today in our mayor's report that salt delivery is going to be delayed. Uh, for some reason we can't get salt, but the county said they have salt. So if we need salt and go directly to them, uh, we have the ability to go directly to them for whatever that's, that's worth to you two gentlemen there. Uh, that was really the only nugget of, of information storm related from the mayor's call with, uh, the county organizes a call every single Tuesday with all the mayors. Uh, that was the one nugget. The other nugget is the fact that they are going to be doing, uh, finally logging in homebound seniors to try and get vaccinations. Uh, vaccinations are limited. Nobody can seem to get them. So, uh, the counties, I think Estes County has led from the front. I think they've done a fantastic job with not only the, uh, the, the testing, but the vaccinations. Uh, they've stood up a site, EstesCOVID.org to get registered. The state's got a site to get registered. I'll talk a little more about that in the begin, uh, in a few minutes, but uh, the, the county is really, really trying to get another million, uh, doses for people. And if you need that information, it's definitely available on our website. Uh, two upcoming events for us to talk about. February is Black History Month. Uh, that has been a special, uh, event here in Belleville for some time now. Last year or two years ago, we had our first ever Black History Month event. Uh, we always celebrate it, uh, which starts really kind of in January, Martin Luther King flag raising. I know Councilman Cazarelli has always supported and, and always spearheaded. In February, we moved that forward to Black History Month. I've been posting relentlessly about that. Uh, Belleville has a very, very vast and, and deep rooted black history. Uh, please see my Facebook post, please see the township website to talk, uh, to read more about that. There are two banners outside the mayor's office that really promote our very unique black history from leading abolitionists in the state, uh, to the first ever black owned newspaper here in Belleville, New Jersey, uh, to the fact that we really did come together as a community and help slaves during on, on the ground railroad passage, a whole bunch of things there. Uh, so throughout the month, I'll be sharing some of that stuff with my social media. Unfortunately, we can't do an event really because of, of COVID, uh, like we did two years ago. Uh, another unique event, uh, February 12th, I believe, begins Chinese New Year. Not typically an event you'll see celebrated here in Belleville, but this one was an historic event. I've talked about this for two years now that the year 2021 was going to mark the 150th anniversary of the first ever Chinese New Year celebrated on the eastern seaboard right here in Belleville, New Jersey. Uh, so this year, this Chinese New Year is, is a, is a milestone event for Belleville. It's the, it's the 150th anniversary of the first one here on the east coast. Uh, again, I had talked for two years about maybe we would do fireworks and maybe we'd have a big celebration. Unfortunately, COVID has kind of put a damper on that. Uh, but I was still committed to organizing something myself. So, uh, what we did was do a tribute. So this coming Friday, uh, this coming Friday, February 12th at about 7:15, the township will put forth a, a, a live video. It's going to be about 10 minutes long. It's going to have some interesting, I don't want to give it away, but it's going to be some interesting things. I'll be speaking about some of our Chinese history that we've all learned about through, uh, some of the work of Michael Perone and our historical society. And, uh, which I, I did extend an invitation for him to participate in this video as well, uh, as well as the Chinese museum in New York City, as well as the New York consul general of China, uh, who did participate actually. So I don't, I, I'm going to give you that teaser that, uh, the New York consul general is going to be involved, uh, this coming Friday. Uh, the town hall will be involved this Friday. It's going to be a nice little event. I urge you all to watch, uh, your live feeds come Friday at about 7:15 when it comes to, to that. The conclusion of the event, uh, Chinese New Year's goes, uh, depending on who you talk to 12 days to 16 days. Uh, we've decided that the conclusion will be on Monday, February 22nd. And to commemorate the 150th anniversary of the first ever Chinese New Year's celebrated on the eastern seaboard, uh, we are going to launch, or we're planning to launch 150 Chinese lanterns, uh, into the nighttime sky, uh, just to commemorate that event. Again, information is on the town website and more will be forthcoming. Uh, some vaccine information. Uh, to date, again, we learned this on my mayor's call. To date, uh, the town to a Belleville, uh, residents of the town to a Belleville have received 969 first vaccines and 187 second vaccines come about 30 days later. Uh, for a total 1157 shots administered to Belleville residents. Uh, we are still COVID testing. Check our website out for more information on that. I believe it's still Monday through Saturday. Uh, am I still, is that correct? Yes, I'm getting a yes on that. So we are still testing. Check the township website for COVID testing and antibody testing, which I feel is also very important. You may have heard the news. Going to just rattle off some, some what I consider o- other news. You may have heard the news that Kmart is closing. Uh, again, our redevelopment team has been all over that. Uh, I learned about the closing through a reporter who contacted me, immediately contacted the redevelopment team. We've already convened a meeting. We already have some ideas going around when it comes to, uh, what's going to happen down at the Kmart property. Want to congratulate the, uh, the library. The library did reorganize in January. We have several new members and I want to welcome, uh, President Mr. Peralta, who's now taking the helm of the library. I, I, uh, look forward to working with him. I've seen some emails that the library and he have already sent the manager regarding specific library issues. I'm glad that I no longer, uh, have to represent both on that one. The government, uh, I want to just mention that the, the governor did raise the capacity, uh, for indoor dining from 25 to 35. You probably already heard that. The governor did release the restriction of 10 o'clock. Municipalities were allowed to restrict that. Uh, once he lifted the 10 PM burden, uh, it reverted back to what the ordinance had in place for the local municipality. Local municipalities were then allowed to restrict that, uh, here in Belleville. Uh, we took no such action. Uh, our businesses are open, our restaurants are open, our bars are open. I have consistently said the science uh, supports the fact that COVID does not spread in bars and restaurants. And I feel firmly believe that some of our businesses have been hurt enough. We briefly mentioned the new police communications room. I had the pleasure of, of doing that ribbon cutting for that. Again, uh, IT infrastructure that this council has totally supported and, and I, I thank them for that. Uh, online registration for spring sports is on our website. Please go to our website to check spring rec programs. I do want to mention, uh, the passing of, of, of a Belleville favorite son, uh, a man who was a, a friend of mine, Mr. Rich Verugia. Uh, we did lose him, uh, on Saturday, unfortunately. And Rich was a, a friend of mine, a political player in this town, uh, involved in this town civically. He was a close confidant and aide to Assemblyman Caputo and also served, uh, as a, uh, one of our, I should say, our, our veterans, um, liaisons or, or commander of one of our veterans organizations, who also sat on my de facto, uh, veterans council. Uh, so where he's going to be missed. I, I believe I've already asked the clerk to prepare a proclamation, uh, in his honor for the next council meeting. Manager, I, and I got a lot, sorry. The, the manager already mentioned the budget committee met. Uh, can't say that I was thrilled with the outcome. Can't say that I'm happy with where we currently stand. Uh, but first time, again, uh, that I can remember anyway, that, that the council has formed a budget committee. Uh, we will have individual meetings with departments come next Tuesday. And I think that we're all, uh, anxiously looking forward to that. Still have the home improvement program, $900,000 available for Belleville residents. Please, we have not had many people partake in this program yet. Uh, please, applications, informations on our website, $900,000. If you qualify and you stay in your house for about five years, the $22,000 grant, uh, would be waived. A great, great program. Uh, funded by the way, by outside developers that come and do business in Belleville, not funded by taxpayer money. Uh, last but not least, uh, green team, this might come up in a second in one of our committee reports, but green team bronze certification, uh, what does that mean? Uh, the green team's done some good work. Benny, just nod if you're going to speak on this in a minute. Now, okay. So I'm going to read it real quick. Uh, it does say that Belleville, I got an email, says that Belleville is a sustainable New Jersey community of only 219 in the state. Belleville achieves sustainable Jersey certification at the bronze level. Certified towns are an outstanding group of municipalities, making important contributions toward the long-term goal of sustainable New Jersey. Uh, we will partake in a virtual, uh, award ceremony on that. I believe it's going to be probably sometime in March. Uh, I am actually winding down. So, snow issues. Uh, I want to thank first and foremost, Boy Scouts PAC 350. Uh, go PAC 350, myself and Councilman Cazarelli are former PAC 350 members. Uh, they called the mayor's office last week and wanted to help assistance in, uh, shoveling out some seniors, uh, some handicap parking spots. Uh, we were able to give them some names and some addresses. So again, grateful for that. Uh, so we did get a lot of complaints. This is the portion that I want to speak about for the snow issues. Uh, again, I'm the chief complaint officer. I get emails, I get texts, I get nasty social media messages and that's my job. I mean, I take it. Uh, I try and answer and assist whenever I can. Uh, we have to understand 24 inches of snow fell or 27 inches of snow fell from the sky in less than 48 hours. As you heard, the manager, uh, we were ready. We were out from seven o'clock. I personally uh, did a drive along with, uh, DPW. I know the manager was there for considerable amount of time. And as the manager said, um, a lot of these guys didn't sleep for two or three days. Uh, a lot of them took naps in DPW. I mean, it's, this was something that we were not necessarily prepared for because it only happens every couple of decades. Uh, somebody said 100 years or so. So we did assist a lot of people. Uh, we did get a lot of issues. We, we've showed you the technology that we have now. We can track everybody. Uh, we can do a lot of things. The next thing we're going to do is record our phone lines to make sure some of the information that's being told to residents is accurate. Uh, there was issues. Uh, I, I was giving out, I, I responded to about 170 emails. Of those 170 emails, 160 emails went out with the wrong number for DPW. Uh, that happened to be the number I was provided with and that number went to a busy signal. So when people were telling me it was busy, I just thought it was, well, increased demand. Uh, turns out the quick, the township quickly pivoted, saw the issue, updated the website within seconds with new telephone numbers. Uh, I was ready to sit here today and yell and scream about, you know, why can phones be busy and we need a second line and roll over line? No, the answer was quite simple. It was the wrong number. Uh, new numbers updated on the township website. Uh, I will say the manager touched on the fact that we were in, in, in communication with the B, uh, Board of Education. Dr. Tomko is an excellent, excellent community partner, always gives us, uh, the ability to work with him. Uh, but he had a whole crew of, of guys that are in plow trucks. And guess what? Half of the crew got knocked out because of a COVID scare. Uh, half of his crew had to be quarantined. Therefore, where we could have augmented our DPW staff, half of his crew, uh, unfortunately had to be quarantined. Uh, so talk about when it, when it, when it really snows, it really, really snows. I've had people say to me, Nutley, the roads were great in Nutley. Our DPW did a terrible job. That's not true. That's just not true. Uh, the roads in Nutley were considerably nicer. There's reasons for that. What most people don't necessarily realize is that Nutley has no overnight street parking. So when there's no cars in the road, they can go right down that street and clean it up. Somebody said to me, well, the state and the county did a great job on Washington Avenue, on Union Avenue. Okay. Um, some people actually disagree with a great job of Washington Avenue that the state did, but I will tell you this. There's no, those are emergency streets. There is no street parking on those streets during snowstorms. So they have a clear path to go right down the street. What that also means is that all the cars that would normally park on Washington and Union go off into the side streets, which make it even harder for us to plow our own side streets. Um, so it's, it's just was a perfect storm. It was a lot, a lot of snow that fell. I get the frustration. Uh, we, everybody that emailed me got a direct response from me. If they gave me their address, that address went to the manager, went to Bobby. Uh, and they got communication that they were out there trying to help these people out. Uh, that said, as the manager mentioned, and I'm winding down, there, there are room for improvement. Uh, the manager talked about 10,000 phone lines on a robocall. I had somebody ask me. I had no idea it was on a, on emergency street. My response was 10,000 robocalls went out and multiple messages went out on our Facebook page and, and social media. So I think we can do a better job letting residents know that we have those channels, letting residents know that they can sign up for swift reach um, and register their cell phone, that they should be following our social media. I'm, I'm a communication guy and I'm, I'm, you know, I hit the manager hard all the time on push this information out, put it out. And I have to say, as a township, we, we do get the information out. I always augment with my own social media, but we do get the information out. But if residents don't know where to look, again, that's our fault. Uh, we should be doing a better job educating them. Manager mentioned, uh, all the, all the handicap spots, all the dead end streets, uh, all the list of, we had first responders, you know, nobody realizes this. We had first responders reach out, say, I can't get out. I'm leaving for work at seven o'clock in the morning. Our DPW guys were there. Uh, I, the deputy mayor was onsite, uh, says somebody's house digging out. I happen to be in a Brack brace, uh, but he was there digging out. We were all doing what we could. Uh, but I think as a sense of community, I think we could always do a little better. And I'm an entrepreneur. I'm always looking for ways to improve. I think if we have a list going forward of, of first responders, we have a list of those 500 or 700, uh, Mr. Manager, parking spots for handicap. We can get our Boy Scouts working earlier. Uh, we can engage our high school kids and, and, and we could do that stuff. Um, that's it. I know it was a long report. Uh, sorry about that, but I think I had a lot to say today. So apologies. Next up on our agenda is the committee reports. Anything that was not covered. Uh, we have ad hoc committees here on this council. Any council member that wants to jump into one usually does. We have a budget committee. You've heard a lot about that. You've heard about a redevelopment committee already. We do have a green team. I talked about that unless Benny or Steve have anything else to add to that.
No, I'm good. Yeah, I'll just, a little, little bit, um, as you said, we have our award ceremony coming up for the, uh, bronze level, uh, sustainable New Jersey certification. So, uh, we're going to, we're going to hit that after the ceremony. We'll, we'll put some social media pictures and some, uh, some cool stuff up like that and tell everyone about it. Uh, also, uh, along the lines of the green team, we are working on a supplemental green team, which is going to be a nonprofit version. That's going to help us get some more grants into the township. Um, so that's going to be a little branch off of our green team. And also little unrelated, but kind of related, we have a, another mural coming, same area, but down the street a little bit on Route 21. This is going to be history themed. Uh, it's going to have, uh, a lot of stuff about Belleville's history on it. Not as big as the other one, but this one will be more detailed. Um, you know, we're going to have some stuff about our, the Dutch church. We're going to have stuff about the Chinese immigrants. We're going to have some stuff about the Underground Railroad. So there's a few little aspects going into that. Uh, and also our historian, Mike Peron is working on that with us as well. So we have some meetings on that coming up and hopefully we start that in the early spring. We already have the artists selected, so, uh, stay tuned for some updates on that. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Awesome. So I think today, uh, the, the residents got a good take. Uh, you've heard us talk about budget committee. You've heard us talk about redevelopment committee. You heard the deputy mayor talk about IT, your Councilman Cazarelli and Councilman Rovell discuss some green team initiatives. Anybody else? Say, again, any other member of the council that's involved in whatever they want to be involved in, have any, and we kind of hit a lot today already. Okay. Without further ado then, we're going to go forward on the agenda to item number nine, which is the approval of minutes.
None at this time, Mayor.
Perfect. Next item, item number 10, communications.
A letter received from Rose DeBeato Esquire, Planning Board Attorney concerning the redevelopment plan for 630 Washington Avenue. B, received from Verizon, a check in the amount of $242,785.36 for the use of the municipal right of way. And C, invitation received to the 2020 Sustainable Jersey Virtual Luncheon on Thursday, March 11th at 12 PM, where the township of Belleville will receive their bronze certification.
Kelly, do you have that, that item A, that communication A, uh, from? Can you, uh, just at the part where it says, dear honorable mayor, can you just read maybe that paragraph? And then you don't have to read the actual law, but then the next, the last, the last paragraph for the reasons stated, can you just read that for the record?
Sure. It says, uh, dear honorable mayor and council members, this letter report is submitted on behalf of the Planning Board of the Township of Belleville. The Planning Board in January 14th, 2021 reviewed the redevelopment plan entitled 630 Washington Avenue Redevelopment Plan Prepared by MCE Associates with a draft date of January 3rd, 2021. And received public comment regarding same.
The next section is just, it's, it cites the law.
And stated that there.
Yeah.
For the reasons stated on the record, the planning board agreed with recommendations of the township planner and the redevelopment plan should be amended to include the revisions attached here to, made a part hereof, and further concluded that the redevelopment plan as so amended is not inconsistent with the master plan of the township of Belleville. Accordingly, the planning board hereby submits the letter reports to the mayor and council for its review and considering the redevelopment plan for adoption.
Okay. Okay. So that was communications A through C. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, which is ordinances. Orchesters for introduction. Okay, so that was communications A through C. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, which is ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
Number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 Property Maintenance Code of the Codified Ordinances, the Township of Bevel.
Make a motion introduce. Motion made and second for introduction. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Dipanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Order number one for public hearing and ordinance of the Mayor and Council, the Township of Bevel County of
He's on mute.
You're muted.
Muted, Cal.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just start that again.
Number one for public hearing and ordinance of the Mayor and Council, the Township of Bevel County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the 630 Washington Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
Motion open for public. We have a motion made and second to open public hearing. All in favor? Aye.
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 We are now open for public commenting just on this particular ordinance. A lot of new faces here today, so we're going to take it very slow as they normally do. The first thing we're going to do is go through anybody that emailed in any, any comments on this particular ordinance to the clerk's office prior to five o'clock today. Madam Clerk, do we have any, any of those communications?
Yes, I do. The first one I have is from Mario Dross, 95 Bell Street. He states, whose recommendation was this zone the property for residential use? That partial was originally purchased for a warehouse use. Tax breaks for rentals do not pay their fair share property taxes, at least condos do. Why is there a clause in the contract for the Board of Ed to lease the office space in the near future? Who put the language in place and why? Did you have input in this project? The project, this project, in addition to all the others, will make it over 1,000 units of rentals. Just add up the projects.
Whose recommendation was it to zone the project for residential use? I'm going to assume that that was probably our planners with the consultation of the owner of the property, with the developer of property, with our redevelopment team. It's a mixed use, so it's not just residential. It's a mixed use property, which is what every other municipality in the state has done. It's considered a four over one or one level of retail and rentals on top of that. Exactly like you see in every other municipality, what they've done for the past 15 years.
I thought we did that years ago, to be honest with you. I know, I know we made some mods, but I think we made that residential years.
So yeah, that's a good point. Would I be able to, would I be able to share my screen? I'm just going to do it for a split. I was going to do this a little, little later on, but I can.
You know, when Jacobs and those guys were looking at it.
I actually have that, so.
Yeah.
What do I got to do here? Share screen. Hey, I don't know if you could see. So just so Mario, Mario, I guess is asking me the question if I had anything, any input in this project. Just so you know, Mario, this was prior to me. I don't want to upset anybody in the council, but this was done before 2018. You'll see that there is residential there, three levels of residential there. You'll see this commercial on the first floor. And then really, our redevelopment team and our redevelopment committee really worked hard with the developer. And actually, I don't think anybody's going to argue that we, we made drastic, drastic improvements. Again, Mario, this was approved prior to me being here. This could have been built, as is by the developer with absolutely no other say of the municipality. We worked with the developer and we ended up with this. I find it hard to believe that anybody's going to have a problem with that upgrade. So that's that. You asked if I had any input? Yeah, okay. I think you just saw my input on the project. It was a mixed use project with residential before me. It's now a mixed use project with residential after me. And I think you see these improvements there. Yes, so over 1,000 units of rentals coming in. And the last major residential project we did was about 20 years ago. And build, and build really any residential projects in the subsequent 20 years. So I think these thousand units will go a long way to offsetting our tax burden that the residential taxpayers unfortunately seem to bear the burden of every single year that our budget comes in. Anybody else that was emailed in for this, Kelly? You're muted, Kelly.
I'm mute, Kelly.
I didn't hear you then.
Kelly, you're on mute.
I know. Sorry about that. Next one is from Vincent Frant Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. He states, what exactly is the redevelopment plan for 630 Washington Avenue? I attended a planning board meeting where 135 residential units and 12 to 14 stores were approved for this site. At the planning board hearing, the owner stated he would not be pursuing a pilot for this project. Has this approval changed? If so, how? Also, can you please read the contents of Rose DeBeato's letter concerning the redevelopment plan for 630 Washington Avenue?
I'll take it from the last one. Please read the contents. We already did that during communications. I instructed the clerk to read that for the record. You may be right, Mr. Frant Antoni. I'm not quite sure what year you're talking about, but a long time ago, there was 135 residential units. I'm assuming 12 to 14 stores were approved for that site. Again, as you just heard in my explanation to Mr. Dros, that was prior to me. And that was already approved there. The developer could have built that. So that rendering that you saw, the before, he could have built that. And I guess, Mr. Frant Antoni, in your world, that would have been okay. I always want a little better. I always want better aesthetics. I want to elevate Bevel, not make Bevel look like, well, that just didn't look good. I'm going to end it there. That, that version that was approved for 135 units and 12 to 14 stores just didn't look good. I think nobody, nobody who's being honest would ever have an issue with the plan that's there now. The rendering is beautiful, two different buildings with a center promenade, cobblestone streets there, outdoor area for entertainment. That was that. I think we may have actually missed one of Mario Dros' comments about the school district there. No conspiracy there. As we sit with the redevelopment team and we sit with the developers, they ask us, hey, I'm having retail, but besides retail, what else can I put there? And I believe, I believe it may have been Vinnie Cazarelli who probably said it just before I would have jumped in and said, hey, if you don't want to put retail there, we know the school district's looking for pre-K space. We know the school district needs space. So no ulterior motive there. We're just allowing them to actually get some space. And it doesn't have to quite be retail. It could be pre-K. Again, I have no issue giving some, some pre-K space without needing a variance to actually go there. So can you please read? We did that already. And yes, so you were right, Mr. Frant Antoni. I'm just not quite sure what year you're in, because that would have been long before 2018, the 135 units. And you know, Mr. Frant Antoni, because you were at all the planning board meetings, you were at all the council meetings when we've discussed this all along the way. This, this is clearly not a secret to you or anybody else that's really been a part of what's been going on here in town for the last two years. Anybody else, Kelly?
That's all.
Okay, so that concludes anybody that emailed in comments regarding this particular ordinance. So again, I see a lot of new faces here. What we're going to do now is anybody that's on video, anybody who I can see on video, if you have a question about or a comment about this particular ordinance, I'm going to ask you just to raise your hand so I can see you. And I could acknowledge you and then we can give you your time to speak. So start, we already did anybody that emailed. Now we're on video. And next, we're going to be on anybody that's not on video. So I'm looking at most of the people now that are on video. I see no.
I have a question, Michael Sheldon. I have a couple of questions.
Okay, but you're not on video yet, so we're going to get.
All right.
Anybody, it's, I got multiple screens here, so I have to scroll to see everybody. I do not see anybody else on video, so now we're going to open up to anybody that's on audio. I believe, Mr. Sheldon, you're going to be first up, state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. The previous two speakers, residents, asked questions regarding both the ordinance and the resolution, which appears in the consent agenda. So are we, are we free to ask questions about both items since they are interrelated? Or we have to have all our questions confined to just the ordinance?
This is second reading for the ordinance. You'll have a right to speak on that and during public commenting on the resolution.
All right. Well, as far as the ordinance is concerned, you mentioned a few moments ago that the, the project from its first rendition to the second rendition is a vast improvement. And I wholeheartedly agree with you aesthetically. The new building is, there's no comparison with the current plan versus the previous one. But I believe you're incorrect when you said that the previous plan with 135 units, it was going to be two buildings, 135 residential units, mixed use was approved prior to you becoming mayor. I'll bet you $1 that the Planning Board approved that 135 plan while, after you took the oath of office. If I remember correctly, it was approved in early 2019. I don't have, while the meeting is underway here, I can race through the YouTube archive and try to pinpoint the, the instance when the Planning Board heard the previous application. But I'm confident that it was, that the 135 units were approved after you became mayor.
Okay.
So I, I'll try to confirm that in the next few minutes before we get to public, the public session. But I think, I think you're wrong about that.
It very well could have been concurrently. When I first came in, it was wrapping up in the planning board and then they put the brakes on it, didn't build it, and decided to come back and redo. It very well, there could have been a small, a small layover there, but for sure, the process had long begun before I was there. It could have ended at the beginning of my term. It could have, it could have. But then we sat down and actually came up with what I think is a better plan, a plan that I certainly stand behind.
All right. You also addressed one question a moment ago regarding the potential Board of Education usage of this facility. And since you brought it up, I want to ask a follow-up question. You mentioned that it could be used for pre-K. Do you know that for a fact? Or is this going to be yet another lease for BOE administrative space as they did with your building recently? And with the Delia Building?
There's, there's, there's absolutely no agreement between the developer, as I, as I just stated, I'll repeat myself. We mandate that a certain percentage of the ground floor has to be retail slash commercial. They said to us, well, you know, retail market is a little soft right now. What can we, can we use as an office? Can we use it as this? Can we use it as that? And I believe it was Councilman Cazarelli who first said it, and I would have said it if he didn't say it right away. But we said, listen, we know that the school district is looking for space for pre-K. Again, this predates the opening of Hornblower Academy. It predates some of the other stuff that they opened. And we said, listen, if you want to use some of that space for pre-K, if the school district is so inclined, you wouldn't need a variance to do that. We're going to write it into, you could use that portion of your commercial space for that. But no, there's absolutely no, that I'm aware of. There's no agreement between developer and it's just an approval that's there, so they don't have to go through the zoning process.
Okay, could you, could you possibly explain to me why with all of the hearings that took place with the planning board for this ordinance, and you sat on, correct me if I'm wrong, but you sat on all these meetings, not once do I ever remember there being any discussion from the, the planners, from Mr. Donatello, from all the hired guns for the, these applications about the Board of Education possibly using this space. If it wasn't for taking the time to read through the redevelopment agreement, this would have largely gone unnoticed by most of us. I actually sounded the alarm over the weekend when I came across this. I think this would have largely escaped the attention of most of the community. It would have been something that flew in under the radar and we wouldn't have realized this until after the fact. Why, why, why wasn't there any discussion of this during, during the planning board meetings? Why, why do we always get these little codicils and little gems added on after the fact when, when a vote is about to take place? There was never any chance in those public intended planning board meetings to, to, to talk about this, to have the discussion with the planning board. Here it is now, just showing up at the last moment, and there's really not a darn thing any of us can, can do or have any input on this matter. It's basically a done deal. And it just, I don't want to sound conspiratorial, but I emailed Dr. Tomko over the weekend. As you, Mr. Melham, like to say, I think, Mr. Sheldon, you were once a trustee. Yes, I was once a trustee. But I emailed Dr. Tomko over the weekend when I came across this and asked him, are you aware of this matter? And normally, Dr. Tomko, even now that I'm no longer a trustee, he would, out of courtesy, respond to me within an hour or two. It's been three days and I haven't heard a peep out of him. So his silence speaks volumes in this matter. I'm sure he was involved with all this planning from the get-go. And, you know, the cat's out of the bag now and he's not going to say anything about it.
That's really out of the bag. I think the cats had to agree with what you said about the conspiracy theories. That's what the cat, can I?
It's just, it's, it's another one of these, you know, backdoor deals between the power players locally here in Bevel. And, you know, some of us are really getting sick and tired of this.
Thank you. Okay. You're not interested in answer. So, okay, are you, are you done with your comments?
Well, let me hear your answer.
Okay, so the answer is you admitted that you actually read it in a document. So I don't know how we're slipping it in last minute when you.
And the only reason I came across this document is because even though I've been asking now for several months, when will the council, when will the town hall make an official announcement about the availability of iCompass, which was, you know, Mr. Graziano's pride and joy. Almost since day one, when you took over the town hall, you've been talking about the modernization and the, the introduction, all this technology. You've been using iCompass since last September, but you haven't made any official announcements. I stumbled upon this portal. And it's only that you fortunately still allow it to remain open to the public, that I can get to the agenda packets and see for, see these things for, for myself. Otherwise, I would know nothing about this, this, this ordinance or the resolution.
But just so the residents are clear, what, what, what has now taken up about 10 minutes of time is the fact that this brand new, beautiful development that Mr. Sheldon doesn't want to speak about, the brand new development that's going to be an anchor on the north side of Washington Avenue, it's going to really paint Bevel in a great light. The fact that it's going to have some commercial space on the bottom of it, and the fact that that commercial space, besides retail, may be eligible to rent for pre-K, free pre-K for our students. If the Dr. Tomko is so inclined to sign a lease with the owner, this is what we're talking about for 10 minutes. Okay, I mean.
I spoke at length about this at planning board meetings, as you very well know. And I, I express concern that you have allowed this project to have upwards of 40% two-bedroom units. And we know what happens with two-bedroom units. Two-bedroom units bring in children. But once, as usual, with all of your, your experts, when I asked, what is the impact going to be on the school system? I get the usual rhetoric, oh, very few, a single-digit number of children added to the school district, even though you're going to have 107 two-bedroom units in this building. And your own Rutgers study that you often cited, planning board meetings predicts that you could have upwards of 60, 60 kids just from those two-bedroom units coming to Bevel schools.
Thank you, Mr. So for those of you who do not know, there's, this has been through the planning board. This has been through the council before. So Mr. Sheldon has had, we've heard all these arguments before.
Which you readily dismiss in your arrogance.
Thank you.
To the chair, Mayor.
Wait, hold on, Mr. Graziano. I'm going to dismiss Mr. Sheldon. I guess he's done commenting, correct?
For the moment, yes. I'll wait till public comments.
Okay, then your time is now up on this particular ordinance, Mr. Graziano.
Yeah, just because my name was mentioned, I just want to share, Mr. Sheldon, as you know, from being in a Board of Education, we wanted, part of my, what I did take on is technology. We brought something, we heard the community. We brought it to the town. I brought it to the town. I have to step away. I am not, I can't direct that stuff. Miss Cavanoff has been doing a great job and that's where, you know, that's where it goes. So yes, as much as I, as much as I brought it to the table, you know, I did what I needed to do. So just in the future, we did what I had to do. You know what I'm saying?
To defend yourself, Mr. Graziano. Well, I'm sure we'll hear more from Mr. Sheldon in public commenting. Anybody?
Can I, can I just jump in real quick too? I just want to clarify something real quick too.
Let me ask you, Councilman, if it's specific to maybe something Mr. Sheldon said, fine. If not, I'm going to ask you to wait till we close public comment.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely specific to what he said about the, about the school and the pre-K. The developer had tried to, for everyone's knowledge out there, the developer had originally, I think, about 20, 20 residential units on the first floor. Mayor, if you remember that, on the first floor, around the courtyard, they had about 20 units. We said, absolutely not, take it out and put some retail in there. They had a concern that they can't rent that much retail space. So in lieu of that, we said, well, then we'll definitely take care of that for you. Either the township will, will, whatever, or the Board of Ed, but we'll fill that space. We'll talk to the Board of Ed and we'll have the Board of Ed put something there, whether it's pre-K, whether it's. it's pre-K, whether it's, um, office space, whatever they need, whatever, at that time, whatever they need, we had a space specifically designated for that. So that's where that all came into play, just so you know. So we actually took out about 20 residential units and put 5,000 square or 4,000 square foot of, uh, designated Board of Ed space that they could use for whatever they see fit. I don't know if it's pre-K, I don't know if it's classrooms, I don't know, whatever Dr. Tomko and the Board of Ed feel necessary at that time, they could use that space for.
Anybody else? Anybody else? So we went through the email, uh, issues, went through, now we have video person. Okay, Mr. Mafucci, just going to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Yeah, no, you're muted. You're muted.
You're muted, Vic.
I should, it says I'm.
Now you're good.
Now you're good, now you're good.
Uh, now you're not. You're not. Just do it once and don't touch it.
Must have a delay.
Nope, you're muted, Vic.
You're muted, Vic, we cannot hear you. You see?
Kelly, can you mute him?
We could, you're now.
You're unmuted, Vic.
You're good.
No. He keeps trying to unmute after we unmute him. All right.
So Vic, you're not touching. Kelly, unmute?
No, wait, timeout, it's not Jackie. Vic, you do nothing, stay still. Corinne.
Oh, Corinne, I'm sorry.
There's a delay when we unmute. He's still muted. Yeah, you're good.
There you go. Just based on Mr. Cazarelli's comment, so how many units is it now in total? You said they took out a bunch of units on the first floor.
Yes. What's the total count now, Vinnie? Do you know offhand?
Uh, two, this was before that, before they had that. So whatever was, add another 10 or 20 to whatever it is now.
Dean is here, I think it's 236, but obviously somebody will hold me to that number exactly. So if Dean is here, let me get a, a number from Dean.
So this was after, it went before the planning board that you had it reduced?
No, this was originally, when we were originally, you know, negotiating with them back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
It's 268 units, it's Dean Donatello here.
Thank you, Dean, 268. I'm glad you corrected me because I would be reading about that. 268, okay. So we went through email questions, we went through one video question, we went through one audio question. Uh, I don't see anybody else on video waving to me. Anybody that's not on video, it's on audio, just unmute yourself, give me your name and address for the record and, uh, you can ask a question or comment on this particular ordinance only. Going once? Going twice? I, I always give a little extra time here. I know we're, we're always quick on the council.
So can I give you a motion to close and move for final adoption?
I will now accept that, that, uh, motion there, Councilman. Do I need, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Quick second, it's a motion to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Counsel, Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Grovel.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
Next on the agenda is public comments, uh, same exact formula we're going to use. Uh, there are a few people that emailed in some comments. Um, and clerk, I guess we'll take them in, in the order that they came in, correct?
A motion open public.
Always forget that. A motion to open public, please.
So moved.
Motion made in second.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm always so anxious to get to the public comments. Uh, okay, number one, Madam Clerk.
First one is from Nelsie Peano Diaz from Forty Vossmore Place. She says, I want to thank the DPW for their hard work. While we were sleeping, the DPW were out there plowing 200-plus streets with the equipment and manpower available to them. I want to also ask you some questions regarding the two pilot properties and express some concerns. We currently have about 1,397 students in high school and about 973 students in middle school. The ratio of students to teacher in elementary school, based on my daughter, my daughter's pre-K through second grade experience, has been over 24 students. Currently, the virtual student ratio is 29 to one teacher. I want to believe that this project is for the betterment of the community, that we want to see our town thriving, but we are taking the right measure and considering our children. Are we shielding our schools for tax abatement by prohibiting the school portion of taxes from being abated? During one of the town meetings, you were transparent in saying that our town management failed us when they made the mistake in the water charge. Is the town considering having an outside audit of these two properties to ensure that the municipality is not short, short-changed? What drew me to this town was that it was a smaller town compared to Bloomfield and similar to Weehawken. Currently, we have about 10,000 per square mile. More units mean more likely more kids and more traffic. Are you considering opening up or building another school to help these numbers? I would also like to know if the school board has a say in the decision. As always, thank you for your time in helping lead the community into a thriving community.
Well, thank you, uh, Nelsie for that, that comment. I did have some documents I want to share with you. Unfortunately, my is not synced. Uh, you know what? Let me just see if I can do it one other way. I did have some specific comments that I wanted to mention. Just give me one second to make sure I can find them here. There we go. Yeah. Uh, sorry about that. Uh, okay. So I do have it on my phone, on my computer. I can't share my screen because I don't have it with me, but first you mentioned two pilot properties. Uh, there's only one pilot here, uh, so there's only one, not two. I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, you mentioned, I'm looking at your exact email here. Uh, you mentioned that we have about how many students, uh, high school students and middle school students. I will tell you that, uh, modern day society is not producing the amount of children that, uh, were previously produced. Uh, that's an absolute fact. Uh, I have a doc, I wish I could share my screen with you. I've actually shared this to members of the planning board, uh, but there is a document that I have there with some grid on it and wish I could share it to you. I could email it after the fact, uh, but it's very clear and in it, it's a report from a consultant that's, that cites the state, uh, the state of New Jersey when it says there is evidence that trends are also affecting public school enrollment. Within the Belleville Public School District, uh, enrollment has declined by 203 students or 4.3% since 2012. Uh, and that is a further, I don't know if you can see that there. Uh, there you go there. It's got the exact numbers there. So it, it's a, first, it's a misnomer that there are increased population. That's not, that's not, just not a fact. I get it. There's a lot of people out there that don't like change and as you heard some comments earlier, there's a lot of people out there that will do and say virtually anything just to stop any progress in this township. Um, I will tell you that the mayor of Harrison has built over six, over, over 3,000 units in the past decade or so and literally has an empty school. They built a new school thinking that he would have to fill that school, 3,000 units. He's actually converting now, all new developments have to be three bedrooms and attempt to lure children in. Uh, so you have absolute facts from outside independent consultants, facts from state of New Jersey statistics. This says here, the source, source right there, source is the New Jersey Department of Education, uh, talks about a decline in students here in Belleville. Uh, young professionals are moving into these units, uh, these young, these units are, a lot of them are studios, some are one bedrooms, a few are two bedrooms. They're not moving in with families. They're not having three or four families. They're not. Uh, I like to say, you could not believe me, you could not believe consultants, you could not believe the state of New Jersey statistics, you could not believe neighboring communities like Harrison. What you can believe is statistics that we have right here in Belleville, New Jersey. The last major development that happened here in Belleville was Essex Park, which is townhouses, gated community, townhouses, more family, uh, orientated. I believe it's 230 units and the last time we asked Dr. Tomko, we gave him every single street inside that development of the 230 units, only 19 school-aged children were there. It's a fallacy that these developments are bringing in children. It's a fallacy that we're going to overcrowd our schools. What's not a fallacy is that every single year our, our budget goes up because of contractual obligations and employee benefits and, and employee support, uh, it goes up. We have not built much in the last two decades or so, which means that you, the average taxpayer, has to foot the bill when everything rises. We have to build more. We're doing a great job. You mentioned about, uh, or so, somebody mentioned over a thousand units coming on board and I will tell you that in the last 20 years, Belleville hasn't built anything substantial. Uh, Essex Park, I was on the council 20 years ago when we last gave that approval and some of these same people, by the way, were here against that back then. Uh, they've just been against everything. So that was the last major development 20 years ago. It has added nine, those kids 20 years ago, 19 school-aged children are at a school already, actually. Obviously they've been replaced by probably a, a very similar number, but it's a fallacy that it brings more children to the schools. Uh, and we could only go with our most closest comparable, which is something that we built here in Belleville. You would think a townhouse, a gated community would bring you more children, 19 kids out of 238, I believe, units. And that, those are Belleville numbers. That's not a, a neighboring municipality. Uh, so I get the concern and I appreciate the question because I love to educate our residents as to what's really going on. There's people out there that just don't want change. It's that simple. We need ratables in this town. Every single year, our budget ticks up a little bit. If we don't bring in new ratables, you're paying more of that. And I think Belleville's kind of getting to the point where we've been paying enough over the course of years. We have a lot of projects coming on board. Those projects will bring much-needed, uh, tax, uh, income to the township to offset your municipal tax burden. Uh, the question I think you also asked to round up is the fact that, uh, do we consult with the school district? Uh, they're not really involved in our, in our discussions, uh, but we, we obviously know that if there's going to be a very unique development that's going to bring in a lot of school-aged children, we would obviously consult with them, but we know the facts. The facts are these developments are not bringing in school-aged children. Um, that's it. Next question, please. You're muted, Kelly, if you're reading. You're still muted.
Next one I have is from Mark Schiller from four-dash-six Rutgers Court. Uh, our water cost is now $1.30 per gallon for Belleville municipal water.
Right there, Kelly, before you go on, that is not true. I'm going to explain that in a second, but that is not true. Yeah.
Belleville's township water is 2.4 times more expensive than not least municipal water. That is about the price of purified spring water. It now costs us $1.80 to flush a toilet.
Not true either.
And the water we are getting from NORC is contaminated with impurities going on for years. The water does not meet state or federal standards. Why is the water so outrageously expensive and why does the town continue to buy this contaminated water from NORC?
So, uh, yeah, just Mark, first of all, thank you, uh, for your comment. Again, I, I don't, I don't hide from any valid questions like you have. Uh, I did spend considerable time, uh, this, this evening and I'm glad that you submitted your question in advance because I had time to actually sit with some of our professionals and, and work through these numbers. So, uh, where you say it costs $1.80 to flush the toilet, uh, that's unfortunately, that's just not true. Uh, and I like to educate our residents. So if you want to call the manager's office tomorrow, uh, he could direct you to the tax collector who can explain it to you, but we actually ran the number. So it cost one penny. Uh, with this new tax rate, it cost one penny to flush the toilet. Uh, just to give you some numbers, it costs for one, uh, for 100 cubic feet, that's how we measure the water, 100 cubic feet of water, it costs about $5. So what, what do you get for 100 cubic feet? You get about 400, I'm sorry, 748 gallons. Okay? So forget the cubic feet, 748 gallons, uh, for about $5. That's your rate, the residential rate. Uh, one gallon equals about .13 cubic feet, uh, and we now know that it costs about, based on those numbers, it costs about a penny, um, to flush the toilet. So, uh, our, we're not charging $1.3, uh, per gallon at all. It's not costing you 100, a dollar 80 to flush your toilet. It's a penny, uh, to do that. Now again, I get it. I, you know, the point of this exercise was not just to correct your math, but I get it that you're frustrated with the water rate. Uh, we're all frustrated with the water rate. Uh, every single member of the council pays a water bill. My water bill was just $362. Uh, I get it and, uh, it affects us all. It's a very difficult decision that we had to come to. If you've been paying attention to any of our meetings in the last six months, we've deliberated this at nauseam. Uh, we've discussed this at work sessions, we've had our professionals in, we were running a deficit of about $2 million a year in our water utility. We were billing and getting $6 million back when it was costing us 8 million. In order to make that $8 million spread and make that $2 million spread difference, we had to increase water rates, which had not been increased since, I want to say 2012 or 14. Uh, so it had gone six or seven or eight years without an increase while NORC was charging us more money each time for the water. Uh, why are we buying water from NORC? It's a monopoly. I, I, I wish I had, I wish I had other options for you. I wish we could say we can just shop our water anywhere else. We cannot. Our pipes, our infrastructure, everything is connected to NORC. Uh, we get our water from NORC. Their water is no longer contaminated. Uh, the, 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 the new chemicals that they've been using to treat their water has proven to work. Uh, two different issues there with the NORC water. The one, as far as lead contaminants or particles falling into your, uh, residential service line is no longer an issue. Uh, they've solved that problem. And again, uh, I can tell you that, uh, I think this council did the right thing in changing the rates. I wish they had ticked it up every single year along with the increase from NORC. That never happened. Um, but I could tell you that, that we now running a, a water utility that equals out $8 million, which is what it cost us to run. And that's why every single person had to get an increased residential and commercial. I am a commercial building. Uh, I don't have a shower, uh, I don't have a washing machine. I make a, a pot of coffee and four employees flush the toilets and I get a $360 bill. Uh, so the commercial people are getting hit even harder, unfortunately. Uh, so I get the frustration, your math was a little wrong. I'm glad I corrected that. It costs a penny, not a dollar 80 to flush the toilet. And, uh, you know, the council, hopefully we get the revenue we anticipate, uh, and if we get above that revenue, we can certainly look to tick that rate down sometime next year into the next budget. Uh, next, Cal.
Next one is from William Milton, 16 Hunkel Street. He states, for the record, is it true that taxpayer money is being used for the next five years to pay Mayor Melham for the use of half of his house at 335 Union Avenue to provide office space for six BOE administrators at a cost of nearly $3,000 per month? If this is true, it would cost taxpayers close to $180,000. This resolution was passed and approved on January 25th, 2021, and it's only for half a house. It appears to be a conflict of interest, which is a situation in which a person is in a position to derive personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. Thank you.
So I thank you for the definition of conflict of interest. Uh, I don't believe, I saw Esquire after your name, I don't think you have a legal I don't believe, I saw Esquire after your name. I don't think you have a legal degree. So your opinion on whether or not it's a conflict of interest is certainly yours and your entitled to that. And I'm obviously not going to change your, your mind. Obviously, the Board of Education would have never been able to vote on it if it was a conflict of interest. It did go through their legal team and their, their, their board attorney deemed it not a conflict. And you say, is it true that taxpayer money is being used for the next five years to pay for Mayor Melham use of half my house? That is absolutely not true. I am not renting half my house. I own various properties throughout the township. One of the buildings I own is a commercial property, happens to be across the street from one of our schools. Those schools do have administrative offices in it. It's everybody's best interest to get more classroom space. This is not the first time the school district has leased property for administrative offices to free up classroom space. I'm not even sure it's the second time they've done it. But obviously, it's only an issue because of my name is associated and not the best interest of the children, which would be to get more classroom space for our students. Not an issue here before this council. I'm not sure I was obligated to give you the answer, but I have no problem giving the answer because obviously there's nothing was done here in secret. It was all done in public. Next, Kelly.
Next one is from Mario Drawes from ninety-five Bell Street. He states, last meeting, I asked why the Board of Ed can hold public hearings, public meetings, and the town council cannot. What is the answer from the health officer? Just another way to suppress the public? Resolution number seven, please explain. This is my third time asking the same question to you and members of the council, or refuse to answer or acknowledge a simple yes or no. So much for transparency. This is the same question the third time. I would like to see the town council pass the resolution this evening condemning the January sixth, twenty twenty-one insurrection and terrorist acts at the Capitol in Washington, D.C. To be sent to New Jersey Senators Booker Eminendez, this is not your sole decision. Maybe you are really a Trump supporter in disguise and not an independent as you claim. I think you may have forgotten our conversation in two thousand eighteen as to why you changed. Want me to remind you about that conversation in your office? What a mistake I made supporting and voting for you. I wish you would stop avoiding questions and answer by dancing around them. I see the Board of Ed has purchased a home near the school, rented two offices so far. I listened to the public meeting and how the super justified all the extra office spaces. If I remember correctly, he said it was to make additional classrooms. He stopped short of saying if all this development in town might impact our school system. It would be cheaper to build a home, one, build a home near one of the schools. You really want the public to believe school enrollment will be going down? Your tenure as mayor in my book will be known as King Michael in the Silence of Your Lambs.
Thank you, Mario. Usually you just insult me, but today you decided to want to insult the other six members of the council. So I guess they can share in, in the insults with me today. As far as Dr. Tomko is concerned, that's not a question for us. You see the Board of Ed purchase the home. I'm taking from the bottom up from the insult back up. The Board of Ed has purchased the home, renting two offices. I've already said Dr. Tomko is trying to clear up classroom space. Don't take my word for it. Feel free to go to one of his meetings and actually ask him. He has in-person meetings, Mario. You can certainly attend them since you're so adamant on attending in person and ask him those questions. Regarding your resolution, any member of the council can put forth something. The fact that nobody has, I guess, is going to be your answer right there. I'm working my way back up from your comments. Last meeting, you talked that the Board of Ed can host public meetings and why the town council cannot. I don't think our health officer has changed his opinion. That said, for those of you who actually are interested in this, I don't think Mr. Drews is really that interested in the answer, but I'm going to speak to everybody else that is interested. So we are Zoom. There are far more people today, as I look across two screens of faces, names, and, and, and videos looking at me, far more people today at this council meeting than ever show up to a Bellevue Township Council meeting. That's number one. Number two, twenty-two, twenty-one of the twenty-two municipalities in New Jersey are virtual. There's only one that is not. Dr. Tomko is actually in person, has a larger venue. So here, even though the governor put us at thirty-five percent within our council chambers with all that new IT for streaming meetings, we still can't safely socially distance, have enough people to have a meeting. The argument would be, let's just go to the Board of Ed. We've done that, not once, but twice. If you remember, the third time we attempted that, the meeting got canceled. Why did the meeting get canceled? Because on a Friday, there was a COVID outbreak. Keep in mind, our schools are now back in session when they were not for a while. There was a COVID outbreak on Friday or Thursday, and Dr. Tomko had a deep clean in the building. He had a deep clean on Friday, Saturday, and I think on Monday, knocking out our council meeting on Tuesday. So the way this works is this, if our municipal clerk noticed a meeting for the high school auditorium in two weeks from now, actually, she might not have enough time to notice that. Let's just say, let's just say the first meeting in March, we're going to meet at the high school. She notices that. Let's just say that we're going to meet February, I'm sorry, March first at the high school. It's noticed, it's done. We're going to meet there. On a Friday or a Thursday or that Monday, Dr. Tomko has a COVID outbreak. Dr. Tomko has to close school. That has to cancel our meeting. We cannot legally pivot to another venue. We cannot pivot to a virtual meeting at that time. We have to cancel our meeting, which is what happened the third time we tried to have a meeting at the school district, which means the council cannot vote to pay bills. The council cannot vote on contracts. The council cannot move this town forward. The Board of Ed's a little different. They don't vote to pay bills. They don't vote to do a lot of things like that. So it's a little different. If we did that and there was a COVID outbreak, plus I watched the last Board of Education meeting, for those of you who are still following me, I watched the last Board of Education meeting, five people were there. Five. Count how many people you see here on the screen. Far more people are here. Of those five people, I believe, three spoke in public commenting. So again, I've argued that we reach far more people here. When we go into executive session, you're not standing out in the hallway like you would be if, if, if we were here in council chambers. You're sitting on your couches. And again, I'm looking at a lot of names that I don't normally see. I welcome everybody that's here. I hope they continue to come. But I argue that we've reached far more people here than we would actually if we were meeting in person. The fact that five people showed up to the Board of Education proves that people are still not comfortable being in crowds. The fact that three people only spoke, when so far we've already had five people speak here virtually says a lot. Next, Kelly.
Next one is from Vincent Frant Antoni, one twenty-nine, my Prospect Avenue. He states, resolution on table, who is the entity or person being considered for media, public information consulting? Number two, resolution number seven, is R and R Bellevue Urban Renewal LLC a new owner of the property or is R and R now a partner with the original owner and developer?
Let me just, Kelly, let me just take those two because they're quick. The, the resolution on tables, Joffe Communications. We've had Joffe Communications since two thousand eighteen. We had them two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. They did some media relations, public relations for us. Basically, any of the positive news that you see in any local newspapers, well, that's tap into the Observer, any local positive news with photography is something that this council does. We do some good things. There are a lot of good things happening here. They take that information and let residents know we're doing good things. I get it, Mr. Frant Antoni, you probably don't like that, but you, you asked the question and that's who it is. We had them in two thousand eighteen to nineteen, two thousand nineteen to twenty. Their renewal for the third year has been tabled. The next one, item number seven, if Mr. Dean Donatelli is still here, I believe you're correct. There's certainly not a new owner of that property. I believe that that is somebody who joined the current owner. Is that correct? If anybody has an answer to that, maybe Dean or Steve or Anthony?
Yeah, this is Dean Donatelli here, Mayor. So the R and R is the contract purchaser of the property and it is an affiliate of the current owner.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, Kelly, you can move forward. I handle number one, number two, number three.
Number three, in the past week, we have received outrageously high water bills. In October, after a huge public outcry regarding water rate increases, the mayor blamed the CFO and other officials for not having the correct information. Mayor Melham agreed the rates were high and he promised a recalculation and stated the rates would be reduced. What happened? No decrease. My one bill increased two hundred and forty-five percent. Since the mayor stated he has hired the first ever full-time CFO, perhaps we can get some answers. When the old water rates, with the old water rates, the town received four million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and an additional rents of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It was then claimed that we owed Newark one point six million in back bills. Simply doubling the old rate received of four million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars would produce eight point eight million in revenue. What is the anticipated revenue expected to be received with the new rates?
Oh, okay, we're dealing with, I have number three. So Mr. Frant Antoni CFO. I blamed, as you say, the CFO and other officials for not having the correct information. When that renew rate was struck, they did not have the correct information. That's a fact. But they didn't have it. They, they, they built, they basically worked up a, a number thinking that most of the municipality was being billed residential. I believe they only had about a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifty properties classified as commercial. That rate was wrong. The first time this council voted to drastically increase the rate, that way, that rate was wrong. And you are correct. The CFO and other officials did not have the correct information. That's a fact. Then what happened is, once they got the right information, and I know Steve Martino, our town attorney, was heavily involved in that, we recalculated all the numbers. And we did vote a second time. That second time reduced the residential rate by twenty-five percent. So when you say no decrease, it's absolutely a falsehood, Mr. Frant Antoni. You know full well that we voted the first time to increase the rate. We voted a second time to decrease the residential rate by twenty-five percent. You say your bill increased two hundred and forty-five percent. You are commercial, Mr. Frant Antoni. If that's the bill you're talking about and you want a laundromat, totally different rate than the average residential taxpayer would get for their homes. So again, council voted to increase the rate. We had the wrong data. Our professionals had the wrong data. Therefore, we voted to increase the rate. The rate should have never been that high. We acknowledged the mistake. We reduced the rate by twenty-five percent. Maybe the manager or Steve or any of our CFOs that we have now can explain that the rate that was reduced by twenty-five percent, was that reflective in the most recent water bill? Anybody?
Yeah, yes, it was.
Okay. So the most recent water bill you had is in, is it?
It, it wasn't the, in the business rate. It was not the, the new rate. The residents have not been billed yet on the new rate because that, they're being billed quarterly. So at a commercial, a business rate, yes, your first month bill was reduced. Judith, you're here. I don't, if you want to join in, but for the commercial, for the, for the residents, they have not been billed at the new rate yet.
Thank you. So as you heard from me, the council professionals, I believe, had the wrong data. Not saying it's their fault. They had the wrong data. We didn't have the data organized correctly. They struck a rate that they thought was going to work. We voted on that. It brought the rates higher. We've got them the right information. They recalculated everything. We voted on a rate a second time. The rate went down for residential taxpayers by twenty-five percent. As the town attorney just said, the residential taxpayers, their most recent bill was for a quarter that that rate has not come to effect yet, but that rate is now law. I'm going to assume that the next time you get your bill, it will be lower than this current one, but still overall higher than it was historically, if that makes any sense. Lastly, you do talk about, it was claimed that we owed Newark one point six million dollars. That's not a claim. That's a fact. When I landed here in office, I received a nice gift. That gift was we owed Newark one point six million dollars. What happened was we were out of contract for many, many years. While we were out of contract for many, many years, for some ungodly reason, nobody in this township decided to renegotiate with Newark and get the right rate. So that went on for three or four or five years. I forget the exact amount of years where we were paying the last rate in our contract. After three or four years, when we finally renegotiated with them, the rate went up dramatically and we owed them that difference. That difference was one point six million dollars that the taxpayers of Bellevue owed the city of Newark. In addition, what you failed to realize, Mr. Frant Antoni, is that we're also under a federal mandate. That federal mandate mandates that we have to replace at least about four hundred residential led service lines. Obviously, Mr. Frant Antoni, you know as well as I do that the residential led service lines are not the township's responsibility. They're the homeowner's responsibility. Tell that to the federal government who summoned our, our attorney to New York and summoned our township manager to New York City and threatened them with huge fines if we did not replace a certain percentage of our lines, which ended up being four hundred of them. That cost is about one point five million dollars that we're bonding out. So, yeah, we were in trouble. Not going to say we weren't in trouble, but what did we do? We rolled up our sleeves. We got it right and we took our lumps. I'm still taking the lumps for it, but we finally got footing right. We finally got our ship corrected. We finally have the right rates, albeit they're high, but they haven't been raised in four or five years. And on top of that, we had one point five or one point six million dollars that we owed the city of Newark. And we had a bond for about one point five million dollars to replace about four hundred residential led service lines. That's not a good day. There's only one way to do that. You either recalculate your water utility to make sure that whatever it costs you're making, or the taxpayers have to make it up. I, I didn't decide to raise rates because I felt like raising rates. We had obligations that we, we owed. It's that simple. Anybody else, Kelly, have anything written?
That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. So public, public portion time. For those of you who do not know, every resident gets about five minutes or so to speak on a topic today. We've done everything that's been emailed in. I'm going to go first. Anybody that's on camera, anybody that's on video. I see Mr. Walter, our DP, our new DPW superintendent. Mr. Walter, he's got his hand up.
Yes, how you doing? Good evening. I'd just like to take the time to thank the DPW, my men. We were out there from the beginning of the storm to the end of the storm. And like the manager said, we left our families, we left our houses. We were keeping Bellevue Streets clean. I've been with Bellevue DPW for twenty-five years. And to be honest with you, this is one of the worst storms I've seen. At the height of the storm, we had some equipment break down and we were out in the storm. It came down so fast and so heavily, it covered everything. I mean, I mean, I was playing on Garden Ave, and by the time I got to the other side of Garden Ave, there was already inch, inch and a half of snow on the ground. So I just wanted to thank DPW, my men, they were out there. And every complaint that we got, we tallied and we also addressed. So thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. I think you, it goes without mention that, that, you know, the manager, I think, did a good job explaining the, the response. I think I did a good job explaining the response. I, I rode with you and I saw firsthand, you know. Listen, you gotta understand the totality of the storm. We had pursuit rated police vehicles, SUVs, four by fours stuck. I was there. Police cars stuck. We had a tow truck come to, I think Bobby was, we had a tow truck come to tow a police car out. The tow truck got stuck. I mean, this was something that just wasn't. And you, you won't hear it from me, Bobby. You certainly didn't hear it from the manager. I know other council people have been very supportive of, of your department and the crew. Listen, take it from me, Bobby, it's easy to pick on the guy in charge, okay? You, you felt a little bit of what I feel almost on a daily basis. Thankfully for you, it only happened every twenty or thirty years when we get a thing like this. To me, it's a fact of life. But I was there with you. The manager was there with you. We support you. We support your team. We know that you guys did not sleep. And you guys are doing everything you could. It just was literally a storm of the century. So anybody else on video that has anything to say? I'm looking for a wave. Mr. Rodriguez, there you are. You're the last person on my screen. You're up.
Hey, you know what? How you doing, man? Nice to see you. Ruben Rodriguez, one seventy-nine, Cedar Hill Avenue. I mean, I think the DPW did a good job better than they did. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we got that flash snowstorm like in the middle of the day and the kids had to get picked up from school and everybody was stuck on Geralman. So I think, you know, considering the twenty-seven inches we got, they did a pretty good job, especially with, on the side streets, all the people on, on, on throwing their snow out of their car because there's nowhere else to put it. So you can come up a block three times, but if everybody digs their car out, it's not the DPW's fault. So I just, you know, I, I, it's easy to pick on them in a bad time. I just, I want someone to say that they did a good job and I know they were out working all night. And if they could just, you know, now that it's over, if they could just get to the corners so we could walk our dogs across the street, I'd appreciate it. But, uh, you know, other than that, I, I think they did a very good job and I think they should be commended, you know, on, on top of that. So other than that, just, you know, hopefully the, the, the snow will melt and we'll get our dog park working, right?
Right. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Looking forward to that one. Anybody else that's on video? I'm going to stick with video people. Looking here, I got two screens. I don't see anybody else on video waving to me. So without further ado, we did our emails, we did our videos. Anybody that's on audio wants to unmute themselves and state their name and address for the record and take five minutes.
I guess I'll go first. Michael Sheldon.
Sure.
All right, Michael Sheldon still at forty-seven Floyd Street. I have a bunch of things, so just take notes so you can answer all of these at the end. Firstly, during the last few minutes, I checked my YouTube channel. I am correct. The planning board heard the, the case, the original case for six thirty Washington Avenue, March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. It was a special meeting. And lo and behold, both you and Mr. Graziano participated in the meeting as the video on my YouTube channel clearly reveals. Next, next item, you mentioned earlier, and I've been having arguments with you the last couple of months about the Board of Education enrollment numbers and projections. You said that you have a study from the state with a benchmark of two thousand twelve. You need to understand, everyone in this township needs to understand that in two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, back in the days when your buddies, and I'm talking about Mr. Longo, Mr. Frida, and yes, Mr. Yanuzi, were largely calling all the shots at the Board of Ed. There was no domicile investigations. We had over at least two hundred students from outside our district, mostly from Newark, coming into Bellevue illegally using our school system. It was in, in September of two thousand sixteen, Dr. Tomko forced re-registration, which caused a mass exodus and, and caused the school population to drop by over two hundred. But two years ago, our demographers, and I've mentioned this several times, Whitehall Associates did an analysis of the current of, of development in the township, and they forecast a modest growth in the student population over the next five years. They weren't aware of things like the Franklin Avenue Sound Development Project or the thing south of Washington, the Town Hall, or this new project on Washington Avenue across from the Motorcycle Mall. So again, I think your numbers are all wrong. You also said a few moments ago that in regard to the Board of Education not having that much of an, of an audience and that they don't have to pass bills. You're completely wrong about that. Every month, the trustees have to pass a bills list, which is much longer than what you on the council have to deal with. So you're wrong about that. You mentioned earlier that in your humble opinion, bars and restaurants don't spread COVID nineteen. That's complete malarkey to borrow a term from President Biden. Every credible scientific source, the CDC, all the major newspapers, say just the opposite, that bars Every credible scientific source, the CDC, all the major newspapers say just the opposite, that bars and restaurants continue to be super spreaders. What you're echoing is largely QAnon, OAN, and yeah, that's, that's the nonsense that you hear from those groups. Laugh if you want, but that's what, that's what those organizations say, that COVID-19 isn't spread through bars and restaurants. Look at what Dr. Fauci, the CDC has. I have the pages on my screen right now. You can do it yourself. You're completely wrong about that. Next, I've been doing some surveying of the tax increases from 2019 to 2020. Maybe Mr. Iacano can weigh in here if he wants to. But I did a statistically significant sampling all over the township. It seems that on average, the tax bill from 2019 to 2020 went up 5.8%. Now, on a median assessed home, that's over a $500 increase. I'm trying to reconcile that with, with the $99 increase you Mr. Melham said was put into effect last year and the Board of Education's $129 increase. Somehow, there's almost $300 there unaccounted for. And please don't say, well, you forgot the referendum. No, the referendum made its first appearance, it started the 2019 fiscal year. So the referendum has no, no bearing here. The numbers just don't add up. Continuing on, I know my time is short. Snow totals, Mr. Iacano mentioned earlier in the meeting that we had somewhere between 24 and 30 inches of snow. According to the National Weather Service, while they don't have unfortunately the official count for Bellevue, Lynn Hurst had 19.7, Newark 16.2, Bloomfield 20.5, Kearney 16, North Arlington 17.5. So if you triangulate, it means that Bellevue was probably somewhere between 16 and 20 inches. It's still a lot of snow. I don't deny that, but it's not the 30 inches that Mr. Iacano was trying to make us believe was the case in Bellevue. Yeah, there were some drifts, I'm sure, that had 30, 40, 50 inches, but, but, yeah, all right, well, I'm getting there. The, the next thing, several months ago, I had had a discussion with you in one of these meetings and you asked me to file the Oprah request. This was in regard to the Walter, the water filter publicity scam you ran a couple of years ago. Yes, you laugh, you give me your right little smile if you like, but you said, oh yeah, we, we sent the petition, we gathered signatures. You asked me to, to submit an Oprah request, which I did that evening. That was on October, September 22nd. To date, I've never gotten any response from Ms. Kavanaugh or Mr. Iacano. I think statutorily, you're in violation of the law at this point. It's been more than seven business days.
Violation of your time, Mr. Sheldon.
No, I would like, well, I want an answer for that. And I also would like to, one last thing. The, I had asked several months ago about the user-friendly budgets, which were largely missing on the township website. Yes, the 2020 UFB is now present. The 2019 UFB has not been posted. It's available through the state, but you haven't made it available through the township website. And the 2018 user-friendly budget is nowhere to be found. I cannot find it through the state treasury site, through the DCA, et cetera. So you, you pay Mr. Fakone and others a hell of a lot of money for these things. Would you please get the user-friendly budget in?
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. So your time is up. We gave you some extra time. I appreciate all your comments.
Thank you for your prevarication and your mendacity.
Okay, okay. I really didn't see any, 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 this is public commenting. The public has the right to comment on anything. It's not necessarily public questioning. I rattled, I mean, there was, the ramblings were widespread between eight and 10 different, you know, bars and restaurants being super, I mean, this is something that, it's, it's my opinion. For some reason, the governor decided to go from 25 to 35%. If he thought bars and restaurants are super spreaders, I certainly don't think the government, that the governor would have went from 25 to 35%. Mr. Sheldon, your time is up. Thank you.
It's irresponsible, just like you.
Time is up. You're being extremely rude. Nobody, five minutes, Mr. Sheldon. Nobody else gets more than five minutes. You're no different. Every person, Mr. Sheldon, you're being very rude.
People will get 10 or 15.
Every single other person that's here that took their time, Mr. Sheldon, you're being extremely rude. So you had your time to speak. This is my son's answer, if I'm so inclined to answer. The water filters, I mean, listen, I, you know, if, if we spent $30,000 on water filters, I would have gotten in trouble. Instead, we went out and raised $30,000 to $40,000. I gave out almost 2,000, I think it was maybe 2,000. We registered 2,000 people and handed out well over 1,000, I think, water filters to anybody that wanted them. No other town in Bellevue would think, and no other town in the state would, would the mayor get abused for that. Didn't cost the taxpayer any money. I organized an effort that registered over 2,000.
Where's the petition?
Started handing out filters and everybody that needed a filter got one.
Where's the petition?
Sheldon, you are constantly being rude. You're being.
No, I want an answer.
Every single other person and.
Where's the petition you sent?
I'm not going to sit there and debate how many inches of snow fell. I mean, you have far more time than I have, Mr. Sheldon.
You're pathological.
How many different people actually got registered? It's just so those of you who know.
Where's the?
We were actually in person right now. I would have a police officer drag Mr. Sheldon or escort Mr. Sheldon off the premises. You could tell he's. You could tell he's.
My attorneys get.
You can tell he's being extremely rude and disrespectful to every single other person. So without further ado, I'm going to let him be disrespectful to the next speaker if he so chooses. So do we have anybody else that's willing to speak? And maybe they could be uninterrupted by Mr. Sheldon. Anybody else willing to get interrupted? Let's see. So if you are here now, I'm going to ask you just to unmute your phone and I'm going to ask you to state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. Going to go once.
Hello?
Yes, who's this?
This is Gustavo Soriano from 33 Watchong Avenue, Bellevue.
Yeah, Sarah, you're up.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you, DPW. Thank you for your work out there. I appreciate it. One of the workers, Warren, came up to my, uh, just want to say thank you to Warren, who came up to my business saying, he came up and asked me if I could move my car because he had to clean the snow out there. So thank you, Warren, for, uh, being diligent and not, you know, being careful of other people's cars and properties and stuff like that. So I appreciate that. Secondly, I had called, I live on 33 Watchong and it is very, I didn't think it was bad until this winter. This is my first winter there. We got extreme amount of snow there. DPW didn't come through as far as cleaning our street. I didn't realize how bad it was until I helped, I helped six cars get out of, uh, snowdrifts there on our block. That what I thought was kind of dangerous was if there's a car stuck on Cross Street and then it's a car stuck by Stephen Crane, if those are two, I can't get off my block at all. And I thought that was, uh, I thought that was a little scary for the first time. And if someone gets sick or God forbid somebody happens, something happens, Clare Moss is right there, but Clare Moss can't even get through. And I understand it was a great deal of snow, but I did call Marie Burke and she said she would get on it and talk to the general manager. No one came through that day. We had to depend on the mechanic that lives up the block for me. So he plowed. And I don't know if it's a game of kind of waiting to see if he's going to come in or not, to see if he'll do it. But no one, if he didn't do it, it wouldn't have gotten done, if that makes sense. So what I'm saying is DPW came in this, I believe today's Tuesday, Monday, but they, they went through. So I appreciate that, but they didn't salt. So our block is, how can I put it? Gets forgotten because it's a dead-end street. And I've spoken to many of the residents and they was like, is this, is this, is this regularly happening? Like this happens every year. So this is the reason why I'm kind of bringing it up. And they're asking, what am I going to do? I'm like, I've just moved here like two days ago. Take a deep breath. I'm like, I like, I go to the meetings, like, what are you going to say? I'm like, and I'm telling everybody, you gotta go to the meetings. You gotta speak up, you know, and make yourself known and make the situation known. So with that, um, in the future, if we can get the DPW coming in there, I'll call and just ask them if they can come through. That'd be great. And also, if we can get angle parking, this is my third time's a charm, so I'm going to keep on trying. And I'm going to suggest, do I need to get a petition for my fellow, um, for my fellow neighbors? Because honestly, Mayor, after seeing the snow, technically, you, if we had angle parking, you put all the snow to one side and you would still have enough room to go back and forth. And I believe that, um, with the engineer saying that you can't do it, is that he's thinking if we did angle parking on both sides, and I'm only recommending we do it on one side. That's all.
So that, thank you for that. And, and as you mentioned, you did cite the engineer. We, we have had the police look at it. We've had, had the engineer look at it. I haven't seen the report yet. I know the chief is here somewhere or was here or the manager or, we'll get somebody to actually give us the report so we could actually review it and know what it says. I know that about that. I know Councilwoman Burke was mentioned once or twice in there about Silver Lake. Councilwoman, do you have anything to add? Just want to give you the option to speak if need be. All right.
She did pick up when I called. So I did call her and she did pick up. And then she said she would get to speak to the, uh, the general.
I'm here now. Yeah, I'm here. Michael, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Yes, he did call me and I called the, you know, the people that had to do it. And Watchong Avenue really is a forgotten street and, you know, I tried my best, but I, because I did call a few times. So I think we have to look into that. And I'm very sorry that happened to you.
Is there a question? Is there neighborhood rep, like, I understand you're our, our councilwoman. Is there like, is there, is there, is there like representation per block? Do you understand what I'm saying? Is there somebody who kind of?
Yes, 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 I do. I have, uh, every block has a rep, yes. But of course, we have a lot of old people and it's a little difficult to get them all together in this pandemic, you know?
Because of that, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I'm going to have you have this exchange with Councilwoman Burke offline. We can't really have a back and forth.
I understand, sir. Sorry about that.
Uh, but yeah, you'll see, obviously you called the council when she answered. She'll, she'll, I think you're the guy on the block, but if she's got somebody. Well, we'll make sure that she gets that, that information to you. All right, ma'am?
Thank you. And you have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody, anybody else that's on audio? Just, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I'm.
Public comment. You have your motion.
I do. I have a motion and a second. I, I just, I always want to give an extra second or so. Okay, we have a motion made and a second to please public commenting. All in, clerk color roll. Let's pull her on that. You're muted. You're muted.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Yumlo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, we're moving closer to the end there, council. So we have resolutions, consent agenda. I'm going to pull item five.
Yep. So you need a motion to move the rest of it?
If nobody else has anything else to.
I don't see anything else.
All right. So I'm going to entertain a motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of item number five. We have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and second clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Yumlo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Motion for five.
A motion for five and then a roll call. We have a motion. It sounds like we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion made and second for a roll call. I have number five. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Yumlo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
I'm abstaining from that one.
Yes.
Next item is resolutions on the table. Any takers? Only once. Takers going twice. Takers going three times. Next item is new business. Anything for new business?
Just, just something real quick, Mr. Mayor. I, I know, and, and I give kudos to, to the DPW because I know this was not easy with the, with the snow removal, but I, I don't think a lot of people even understand that. We've also had some water main breaks in which one was around the corner from me. So I, I give them kudos in that respect too. Because weather just makes it worse.
Yeah, listen, it's not easy. It's, okay, new business. Anybody else going once? Anybody else going twice? All right, we have nothing for new business. So we're entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second. Motion made and all in favor?
Hi.
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 We are adjourned.